We'll be like on a two-minute delay, but I just want people to...
Hello? Are we all here?
Looks like it.
I think so, yeah.
All right, I can call this meeting to order then. Do we have both council members, Liam, Ned, and Wahab on the line?
Yep.
Yes, I see, okay.
Yep.
I see you, okay. Let's reflect, all of us, all the members of the committee are here. Are there any public comments? Is there any, yeah, member of the, okay. So, see...
We only, Mayor Halliday, there was only written comments, public comments excepted for this meeting. So, there was one letter that was received, I think hopefully got emailed out to the committee. I'm not sure if it got, did Chrissy email it out, Dustin?
I believe so, I believe it went out in the last hour. We just received...
Oh, okay, I might not have seen it in the last hour. Let's look for it. Is it?
From Chrissy Mello, look for that in your email.
Yeah, so that is agenda, agenda item. That's agenda item three, should we wait until then?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So, we have approval of the minutes of May 20th.
Second.
All right, all in favor? I don't, anyone opposed to approval of the minutes? No? Okay. The minutes from May 20th are approved. We're going to move on to item number two, which is review of proposed fiscal year 2021 Public Works and Utilities Department organizational changes. Just going to take this.
I can go ahead and jump in here, Mayor, if you'd like.
Okay.
So, what we put forward, and I won't hash through each of the positions or the reasoning behind it necessarily, but can answer questions. You know, after getting through the budget adoption and sort of reassessing or assessing where the, where we ended up discussing with Public Works Director Mary, we noticed that there were a few positions that really needed to be included, that were not included in what was proposed and then adopted by council, so that they could really perform some very important functions, allow them to continue to operate in a both safe and strategic manner, and operate in a way that addresses some of council's priorities. To that end, we're looking at adding three and a half positions in the utilities area of the city, so that we can continue to provide excellent service to the community and continue to operate in a way that will allow us to address the needs of the community that council feels are most important. That's really kind of all I've got, looking to get the committee's feedback on that. And if it is supported by the committee, then asking that the committee refer this to council for their approval and review and potential approval in September.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? From committee members?
Why, why did we not include it? I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, go ahead.
I just want to understand clearly why we didn't include it, and, you know, within a month, we're including it, pretty much.
Right, so essentially, it was partially missed in the proposal, as you all are very aware. We went through a very, in some ways drawn out and in other ways very abbreviated process, some of which, you know, essentially Kelly and I had to make some decisions without being able to go back and check each and every one of those decisions with the department heads. This was one that, you know, nearly the day after it was adopted, Director Mary approached me and said, "I thought this was in there." The conversation went like, "No, it's not." He was upset because, you know, these did not have a general fund impact, yet the decision was made to exclude them. That's sort of why I bring them back to council humbly, or the committee humbly. Should I, if they had had a general fund impact, I would have obviously told him that now was not the time, and we would not be bringing this back to the committee now and then to the council in September, should it have been, should it be supported.
All right, any other, do you have any other questions, Ayesha?
Okay, so no impact to the general fund, which was in the staff report, and, you know, I hesitate to move this forward just because of the fact that we did talk about the budget, there are some concerns, obviously, as we move forward as well. But I have no other questions, thank you.
All right, thanks. Sarah?
Thank you. So, you know, I appreciate that this is not a general fund impact, however, we did ask for COLA reductions or, you know, employee savings based on agnostic of the fund. And so it feels inconsistent to approve additional positions. You know, the changing positions, even though there's a cost to that, I can kind of wrap my head around, but the ones that are straight adds, I'm having real difficulty with, so, speak to that.
I can, sure. You know, the ones that are adds are being added specifically to address council priorities. And so, you know, if they, if they're not added, that means, you know, essentially, we may not be able to do some of the work that council is hoping for in the near term. I think that's going to be true regardless in a lot of areas. I think, you know, none of us are thrilled about that, but we understand that with the impacts of COVID-19 on both the organization, the economy, the community, the country at large, you know, we understand that there may be some adjusting of priorities, maybe not the priorities specifically, but in the sort of deliverable timeline. So, if that's the case, you know, I think Director Mary will understand. And, you know, the others are being added specifically for sort of the ability to address current needs in the organization and in the community.
And I don't have any qualms about the justification for the positions. You know, it's a very well-run department. The asks that come out of that department are very well-reasoned. I trust you, Dustin, and Kelly, and Maria, in terms of vetting these things. So, our process is fine, and our, you know, service is exemplary. What is, what I'm feeling like I can't support is going back on the everything has to cut agnostic of department. And so, if that then means council has to reconsider what our priorities are or what our timelines are, then that's our role in that. And so I guess that would be my recommendation is, you know, to the extent that it makes sense to re-modify an existing position, okay, we pretty much do that regularly, and there were some of those in the budget, so that feels consistent. Anything else that has, you know, is just a complete add, and therefore, we need to rethink priorities or expectations when they come to that, if that makes sense.
Okay. So, I want to ask about, you know, going back, I mean, we have now fully switched to the automated metering system. And I know I have asked this before, and I believe I was told that now we have to, we have to do it differently, and so we have to read the meters, and there was still, I mean, did we have a, did we not have a reduction in the need for meter-reading positions when we switched to the new system?
We certainly did, and we have reduced the number of meter readers that we have. That doesn't mean that there isn't a need, essentially, their function changed, it morphed a bit, because we still do have equipment that they're going out and servicing, they do break, you know, they are going out, and when we have problems, they've got to go out and read and verify certain things, you know, that the numbers are being read correct, or if they're not, fixing the problem and making sure that we adjust folks' bills. So, there is still a function that they're performing, it's just they're not simply going around reading, recording, and then billing in the same ways that they used to.
And if I may add, Mayor, you might have seen it in the staff report, but Alex did evaluate which positions that he currently had that he no longer needed, and in the proposed position deletion.
There is a half a meter reader, I did notice that, yes. But, so we still have, so how many do we have? And it's just that I have trouble understanding how, if we were going out and inspecting, you know, all of the meters every, I don't know, I think it is not every month, it's quarterly, right? Is that correct? Was it billed quarterly?
I believe it used to be...
Bimonthly.
Every other month, yeah, correct.
Or, yeah. So, so that, we now still have work for all those people who are doing that, or have still had work in doing this other, like, and now we're losing a half of one. It's, I just, I honestly, I don't understand this. However, what I do understand is that water, that providing water service to people is one of the most important things that we do, and probably less important than water, wastewater treatment service, but, and not as extensive, but it is still, it is still very, very important. And, you know, and it is a well-run department, and it is, it is an enterprise department that, you know, so the money, is the money there in the enterprise fund to support these positions, these additional positions?
It is, and, you know, we're not, we have, you know, as you all know, we are looking to freeze rates where they're at, so that we can offer the community a break during all of this, avoiding, you know, increases in fees and things like that, so that we can, you know, not hurt people that are already hurting any more than they already are. And so, yes, the funds can support it. Essentially, if it's not something that the committee supports, then we understand, but...
And we did, we did raise rates, we have raised rates recently, largely because of the increased cost of the water. You know, I have a hard time not recommending it, because I, this is, and some of them are tied to our conservation efforts, our ability to deliver the, to deliver the recycled water that we're now giving. And I am fully aware of the increased regulatory requirements and the need to meet them and the need to document that. So, I, you know, I am ready to support passing this on to council, and we may get similar questions there. I mean, I think the questions certainly are warranted, though, that, one of mine was, well, we have difficulty again recruiting for the new water resources position, that is, because apparently, we didn't fill that before because we had trouble recommending it.
You know, I think that's a fantastic point, and I think the answer, quite honestly, is yes. And that's part of the reason we're here, is so that we can begin recruitment for the positions that we know are hard to fill, with the hopes that we'll get them filled in the last quarter of the calendar year, but no sooner. And, you know, in all likelihood, there's always potential that it could go even longer than that. However, we don't want to go out and recruit for a position that we don't have included in the budget, find a great candidate, and, you know, not be able to bring them into the organization. And so that's, you know, another reason that we're approaching the committee now, in the hopes that we can, you know, sort of replenish, we've seen a lot of talent walk out of the, walk out of the organization, because, you know, quite frankly, quite frankly, there are districts that pay a whole lot more money than we do. And so, we tend to lose some of our most talented folks to those higher-paid positions. So, we're trying to create, you know, with some of this, a more natural path, growth path inside of the organization, so that they don't have to leave to either get promoted or get an increase. And so, you know, do I expect that it'll be difficult to recruit? Yeah, potentially. We are in a bit different environment, where we know there will be probably some more people looking towards the government for employment, with some of the for-profit industries hurting and, you know, that sort of thing. But I can't say definitively yes or no on that, but my gut tells me probably we'd have some difficulty recruiting in the same, similar ways that we have in the past.
And I know all of these, the, whatever it was, three positions, the ones that are being eliminated are now vacant, but they are included in the budget, although we're having savings right now and not having them filled, and probably have been, correct?
Correct.
So, anyway, I, all right, I mean, I would be inclined to recommend moving this forward to the, you know, to the full council with a, you know, approval, but I think that that's not where my two colleagues are. Am I, are we still correct? I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Is there a second? I'm not hearing one. Does someone else want to make another motion?
Sure, I'll move that, that a recommendation can come to council that works within the existing positions and makes adjustments, recognizing that, and also provides feedback if there are adjustments to priorities or deliverables that need to adjust reflective of that, and certainly, you know, open to revisiting this in the next budget cycle.
Yeah.
The reclassifications or upgrades of the positions, that would be the recommendation to move forward with those, but not the new position adds.
And to go ahead and recruit for the ones that, you know, within replacing positions that are vacant.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are we asking for potential options? So, for example, if, if an adjustment were to be made that, you know, the staff, let's say if we move forward with this motion that in the staff report, coming to council, there would be an option saying that, hey, if we were to include these, these are the priorities that we would shift. If we were to go with Plan B, these are, so I just want to make sure that, you know, I personally would like to see the full picture and the impact with and without. So, with just in line with employees that are currently available, and then possibly a Plan B with, you know, the current employees to add and delete and impacts, if that makes sense, right? So, like, the full picture, so then the full council can decide.
I'm not sure it fully makes sense to me right now, but, but I think, I get what you're, I think I get what you're getting at, and that, and yes, that certainly can be included in the motion, that coming forward to council, include that kind of analysis of...
I think what we would do is take the strategic roadmap and identify which projects might be delayed or deferred because of the not adding positions, is what I'm understanding. Or other projects that might get delayed that aren't in the strategic roadmap.
Okay, I would be supportive of at least understanding full picture, the impact, pros and cons for each plan, if the motioner is okay with that.
Certainly, having...
All right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, with that, and Steph, do you think you understand that, the way, you know, I think she really, she just wants it to, it will come back to council, I assume, with a fuller analysis of each position, the need for it, and what happens without, and with the accompanying financial analysis, too, of where we would stand. All right, that's pretty clear to me, and so I, so I will support that motion as well. Did you second it, Ayesha? Did you go ahead and do that?
Yes.
Okay, so I will support that motion, and you can carry this forward with that recommendation from the Budget Committee, that we had concerns about increases in the budget, and we asked that it come back to council in this manner for final determination.
We'll make sure that that's included in the staff report, and then also the discussion in September.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to item number three, which is review and discuss public safety, community survey, policy topics, and here's where, and I'll just go ahead and read it before, well, I guess we could, I don't know, we don't, we hardly ever have, I'm going to go ahead and read this.
Yeah, I know we don't normally, but it also came in before, I think, I mean, I know I didn't have a chance to read it, it sounds like you didn't have a chance to read it, so we might as well read it.
Okay, it's not that long, it's just, okay. To the Budget Committee, we are writing on behalf of the Hayward Community Coalition, a collective of over 60 community members, not the same 30 people. The voices you hear are the voices that speak for our loved ones who stay at home to care for families. We speak for essential workers working night shifts to make ends meet. We speak for those who simply cannot refuse to partake in a system that has routinely shut them out. The stories you hear of fear and injustice are the stories of a community who is too often overlooked. As a community, we are concerned about the decision to bring in an outside consultant to do what? We ask that you consult with us, the community, your community, not an outside consultant who use the heart of the Bay as figures and numbers. The residents who have direct interactions with law enforcement know best how to allocate money to make our community and schools safe. We ask that you listen to the voices of the community who call into city council meetings pleading to defund the police, listen to the voices chanting in our streets to abolish the police, listen to the stories of students who have felt intimidated by the SROs on their campuses. No outside consulting firm can make an assessment that speaks to these lived experiences. When we ask that 10% of the police budget be reallocated to fund other needed community services, such as counselors, mental health first teams, therapists, and other services that help the community. Okay, that's, okay, well, in regards to the 10%, we feel are being generous, loving generous. We have seen neighboring cities like San Francisco, Oakland, Berkeley, San Leandro, and more take swift action in response to the calls of the community. Some of these cities are committing to redirecting up to 50% of their police budget. Too much money is going toward funding a system that continues to terrorize our black and brown community, while simultaneously depriving them of basic needs and other forms of safety precautions. The police do not keep us safe, the police do not prevent crime. Investing in community services and opportunities will help prevent crime. The Police Act is under trained first responders to situations that should be addressed by professionals well-versed in practices to de-escalate situations that include mental health crises, domestic violence, homelessness, and substance abuse. Investing in these professionals is an investment in the actual safety and well-being of the community you have been elected to represent. For nearly two months now, the Hayward community has organized several marches and rallies to speak out against police brutality, racism, and injustice. The community is calling for justice for Augie Gonzalez, Nate Greer, Roy Nelson, Steny Ramirez, and those who, before them, whose lives were taken too soon at the hands of Hayward police. We feel that the city council has brushed aside, brushed us aside in response. The community came together in front of Mayor Halliday's house to ensure she listened to our demands to defund the police. History shows that Hayward is not immune to the issues of police brutality, misconduct, and racism. You've seen the reports and recordings, and you have been complicit in the injustice. The community will no longer be idle or compliant with injustices that members of our community continue to endure. The Hayward community knows what is best for us. Consult with us to make budget and policing decisions. We are the ones who bear the burden of their mistreatment. We ask that you establish a citywide participatory committee for all residents to have input on how to reallocate the 10% of the police budget to non-police community-based services and community in solidarity from the Hayward Community Coalition. Okay, not everything, oh. Okay, that's the public comment. So now, I'll move on to ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I will kick this off, and we have a number of staff members who are here to participate with us in this conversation. I wanted to just reiterate from the July 21st work session, the purposes of the community engagement framework that we presented to council. And that is to listen and respond to community member concerns about policing and public safety in Hayward, and in particular, the way in which city policies and practices may be disproportionately impacting communities of color in Hayward. We want to have a broader conversation on public safety issues to create a shared understanding of what public safety means for the Hayward community, and to begin to brainstorm some potential policy options for realizing that vision. We want to cultivate and strengthen critical relationships between community members, the community advisory panel, the police department, and other city staff. And we want to relay information to council about community priorities for public safety identified during the engagement process, experiences shared relating to policing in Hayward, and recommendations and policy options identified centered around racial equity to achieve public safety for all Hayward community members. And I just, to that end, really, we had focused on, I think, two elements of the plan that were sort of crucial to, sort of the core of that plan. One is the sort of quantitative data analysis, and that is a survey that would be, you know, scientifically conducted to give us a more broader view of general perceptions across the community about public safety, about policing. And then the second piece would be the more qualitative piece, which is a lot of what I think you're hearing in the letters and the public comments, which is the stories, the trauma, the hurt, the anger that some members of our community feel and have experienced and want to express to the city council. And so, that's why we've coupled the survey with the community conversations, so that we have a narrative to go along and to, and have statistics also, so we can hopefully match those two up and figure out, I mean, the purpose of this statistical study is to determine if there are particular neighborhoods or areas of the city that are receiving or feeling disproportional impacts from policing services, if there are certain demographic groups that are experiencing disproportional impacts. And then that also helps us more, be more focused in the community conversations that we're having, so that we can dive deeper and understand and have those community conversations with those groups, with those neighborhoods, to understand what those concerns are. And so, really trying to create a package that helps us present a more fuller picture to the council about the community's needs and desires. And so, what we wanted to do, we did hear from, I believe, at least four council members during that work session, a desire to move forward with the survey in some way, and we did hear some concerns with some of the proposals that were in that initial, the staff report. We have, we have asked Dave Metz and Miranda Everett, who are with FM3 to join us today, so they'll be here to listen to the committee's conversation, also to hear feedback. And one of the key pieces we heard was this, the focus group that, or this online focus discussion board that FM3 was going to facilitate, that there was concern, you know, why do we need a consultant to facilitate the focus group? We also heard a concern about having some additional expertise brought into their team that may have more experience in policing, racial equity issues, you know, and some of the institutional and systemic racism and bias issues that we're trying to dive into. So, in talking with FM3, we are proposing to modify their scope of work to basically eliminate that front-end focus group conversation and bring on, they will bring on a subconsultant that will specifically be focused in a practice of understanding racial equity issues, policing issues, and have more of that experience. We've been working with two consulting firms that could serve as subcontractors, we're trying to work out the details of that a little bit more, but I can, I will let the council know once that is finalized. One of them is based out of Oakland, another is... Another is a sole proprietor who is in, originally from the Bay Area, but doing some additional work in Los Angeles right now, and so, but has grounding and grew up in the Bay Area. So both of those firms, I think, would provide some of that context that I think that I heard from the council that was missing from that discussion the other night. What we really wanted to do tonight was to let the committee do a preliminary sort of deeper dive into what some of the policy issues might be for this survey. What questions do you want to ask in the survey? And really, this is the first conversation. We, I know we added, as attachments to the staff report, the letter from the Community Services Commission with a number of their recommendations, the original seven demands letter from the Community Coalition. I know there's a lot of other sort of policy topics that are out there floating around. So I think what we wanted to do is really let the committee brainstorm around those policy issues and areas, if there are specific topics that you want to make sure that are covered in the survey, and then also to allow you to ask questions of Dave and Miranda about, I know there are some concerns about methodology, and particularly from Council Member Wahab during the work session. So, you know, can talk more a little bit about why, you know, certain methodologies are used when we're doing a survey. And I do want to emphasize that the survey is for all residents. It is not just for registered voters. I know we've used FM3 before for, you know, for polling data for ballot measures, but they also do resident satisfaction surveys. This is a methodology, and I think there was a question of why are we hiring a consultant? It's because we want to have more sort of scientifically-based data to be able to dive deeper into these issues. So I'm going to stop talking there, and we're happy, I think, Dave and Miranda can turn their cameras on at some point, and you can meet them, say hello to them. There's Dave. And then we're happy to answer any questions, just hear from the committee about how you want to move through this discussion and topics that you might want to cover in the survey.
Okay. So that's your, I'm getting a little echo there. So now you're opening up for our questions. We're not going to have a presentation. Okay. So who would like to go first? Okay. Do we have any questions? Wow, I had a few.
I do have questions, or, so we're not getting the, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
We're not getting the list of questions today, right? We're not getting a presentation or anything?
So this is the first step. And then what we're planning to do is, I think Dave and Miranda will take copious notes from this conversation, put together, and then we'll also be talking with other stakeholder groups, getting feedback and input into the survey questionnaire. And then I think what I would propose to do is send that questionnaire out to council members via email, and because we will be in the August recess, and then I'm happy to have follow-up conversations with council members to walk through that. I think that will still fit us within our timeframe and to conduct the survey on the original timeline that we were working on.
Okay. So my question is, and for anybody listening, to do any type of survey or anything, the first conversation we had, I want to say on the 21st regarding all this, I want to understand from you, what was your perspective in, as you always state, direction from council, specifically, as I've raised many points, but because, you know, colleagues haven't chimed in after I spoke, so I kind of want to understand, out of the many different points that I actually suggested, and I know our mayor spoke after me, but, you know, some of the items I brought didn't necessarily, with the four nods, so I just want to understand clearly, on this particular issue, what is it that you included, adjusted, changed? So I understand that we are potentially getting a subcontractor.
Correct. That was, I think, direct response to, I think you had mentioned a concern about having someone with some of that more specialized expertise. I think Councilmember Salinas had talked about potentially leveraging some of the faculty at the universities. I think a couple other council members had also expressed, you know, an interest in having that partnership.
Are we increasing the number of people participating from that 400 to hopefully 5% or something closer?
So I'm going to let Dave actually answer that question about why the 400. We will probably increase it to maybe 500, but there is a magic in statistics to that number. So Dave, you are the statistics guru, so if you want to talk a little bit more about why that number, and I think five, just frankly, interviewing five, or surveying 5% of the community would be cost prohibitive. I mean, it would cost us, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to do that. So that's what, but we can talk more about the methodology. So why don't you, Dave, go ahead and do that.
Sure. So in doing surveys, the sort of the underlying principle is that if you take a randomly selected sample from a large population, the size of that sample will determine the margin of error for the survey, but the size of the underlying population doesn't really affect its accuracy. So for example, if we do a survey of 800 people in the city of Hayward, it'll have a margin of error of plus or minus 3.1%. If we do a sample of 800 people in the United States, it will also have a margin of error of 3.1%. And each will speak to the broader population from which it was drawn with the same degree of accuracy. The key is that the sample be random, that the participants be selected randomly, and that all residents of the city have an equal percentage chance of being selected to participate. And as long as that condition is met statistically, samples of a few hundred people can speak to the opinions of the broader population with that statistical precision.
Okay. And then I want to understand, are the subcontractors, one, I would eventually like to know who the names are, and eventually, you know, how they were selected, specifically if we did not do an RFP, which I do not believe we did on this, right? So I'd like to see that. I'd also like to see the number of researchers that are specifically people of color and, you know, have lived experiences and so forth, their education background and so forth. And then, at the same time, when we, you know, you referenced the Community Coalition, the Collective's original seven demands, these are moving pieces as well, because I think the seven demands got whittled down to about four. And, you know, how will the engagement be with those specific groups? I also, I know I'm also interested in the engagement with SEIU, because, you know, when we talk about cuts and stuff, it's usually to not the focus, right? So I don't want them to be impacted. And then I want the police to also have their own, you know, internal assessment of what they believe they can do, they'd like to see change. And that's not only like in their career, but then also in their department and how they service the community. So a real deep dive with them, because I think that their voice is important as it impacts them as well. So that's at least my two cents on it. I'll refrain until I hear from others or if something pops up.
Why don't, I'll just talk, so we've explored the two subconsultants. Because of the size of the contract, it can be a more informal bidding process. It doesn't have to be a formal request for proposals. I know Laurel has been reaching out to the Urban Strategies Council in Oakland, which I believe is a minority-owned business. Laurel, do you want to speak more to the Urban Strategies Council? And then Dave can speak about the other woman that we may work with. Laurel, if you can hear me.
Yeah, absolutely. You may be already familiar with the Urban Strategies Council. It's a regional research and advocacy organization dedicated to racial, social, and economic equity. And they have worked as consultants with governments, with nonprofits, with other agencies and entities before doing social research and data analysis around issues that have to do with racial equity, criminal justice reform, economic opportunity, and violence prevention. And they've been around, working in Oakland and the East Bay for more than 32 years.
And then, Dave, do you want to talk about the other firm?
Sure.
Sorry, sorry. Before you begin, I do want to say that I, granted, you know, the firms that do the work is one thing, information or getting a second opinion, and, you know, you can discuss costs or so forth, but the Ella Baker Center, as well as Urban Habitat, I think are two organizations that would potentially like to chime in if we are trying to be as thorough as possible. They are local Oakland-ish, right? So I would like, I'm sure that people could even potentially pro bono. There are a lot of policymakers and so forth that are involved in that. So just tossing that out, but go ahead.
Yeah. I heard the Ella Baker Center. What was the second one?
Urban Habitat.
Thank you.
What was the other one?
Ella Baker Center.
Sorry.
I didn't hear it.
Ella Baker Center, Urban Habitat, and Ella Baker's Baker Center.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes. And then Dave was going to talk about the other firm that we've been having conversations with.
Yep. So we've also talked with Shakari Byerly, who runs a public opinion research company called Aviteris. They're based down in Los Angeles. She's a former colleague of ours who worked for us for a number of years before going down to LA to go to UCLA and get her PhD in political science. And while there, she's been studying primarily the relationship between race and ethnicity and public policy, and much of the work that she has done as a pollster has focused on those issues specifically. And as Kelly noted earlier, she was based up here in Northern California for years in Oakland, and is familiar with the community as well. So we thought she might be a good fit. The other thing I would note is that while, from a contracting perspective, this person might be a subconsultant, certainly because of Shakari's expertise in public opinion research, we would view it more as a partnership, where we would work together in all elements of designing the survey's methodology, writing the questionnaires, gathering feedback from the city, your partners and other stakeholders, and revising it, and then analyzing and presenting the results. So it would be a, it would be sort of a team approach.
And I think we can also reach out to the organizations that you had mentioned, Councilmember Wahab, and see how they might also provide some input or feedback into the work that we're working on, and if there's some additional advice or sort of policy guidance they may provide. So I think that those are great suggestions. We'll look into those as well.
Just to also add, when we talk about Cal State East Bay professors, there's two professors on the top of my head that I think are local as well, you know, women, women of color, background in political science, as well as a PhD in ethnic studies. So I think that I'm happy to forward their contact as well. I think that they would, you know, chime in, if you will.
Yeah. I think all of these groups would be very beneficial in sort of review of the survey questionnaire and kind of looking at it from that lens, you know, once we've got sort of a rough draft, and I think there'll be some, a lot of folks that will vet that and look through that. So yeah, that would be great if you could send those contacts along to us.
Anything else, Ayesha?
No, I'll chime in if I hear something.
Okay. Okay, Sarah?
Sure. So thank you. I appreciate the report and the response. I, do you vote? So let me just talk through kind of the contract and the funds, just to make sure I understand what the plan is. And I know you've said this, I'm just saying it back to make sure I understand it and can articulate it. So the idea is that a survey get created to help us do broad-reach community, not community engagement, but community input, that that's both the dedicated phone survey for 500 people. And then is there also an online plan? I know for the community survey and some of the other ones, we've done online.
Dave, will there be an online questionnaire? Is this going to be mostly phone interviews this time?
So the methodology we've designed will have three components to it. We're going to select a random sampling of residential addresses within the city of Hayward. We will then gather whatever data we can about those addresses, contact information, including landline phones, wireless phones, and email addresses. We'll use all of those methods to reach out to a randomly selected member of each of those households. And then for those households where we are unable to obtain other contact information, we'll send them postcards with an invitation to participate in the survey. So the idea is to try to be as diverse as possible in our mechanisms of outreach, so that for each randomly sampled address, you have as many opportunities as possible for the members of that household to participate.
That's all good. And, so I understand that, and I understand why that is, that there's some framework around that to make it statistically sound, and that the methodology looks at that. In the past, for some surveys, we've also had a dataset that was strictly an online survey. It wasn't, the two data sets were disaggregated, so that it was clear that one was the methodology and the other was, you know, whoever happened to respond in the way that they happened to respond. And no, we don't have a way to necessarily know if it wasn't the same person multiple times, but it was a little bit broader for anybody who said, hey, I didn't get that phone call, but I really have something I want to say. So is there a thought of doing that this time?
Yes, absolutely. And that's very easy to do. We can take the online survey questionnaire, provide the city with a link that will take people to the questionnaire and allow them to fill it out. We can set it up so that essentially each individual computer can only respond once to avoid attempts to sort of multiply responses. But then, not only could the city essentially open the doors and say, any member of the community who wants to take the survey is welcome to, but it also may be that there are certain subgroups within the population whose voices we really want to make sure we hear, who we know are just bound to be represented in small numbers, even in a robust random sample survey. And if there are stakeholders or partners that can help us reach out to those communities and give them the survey to take it, we can gather all that data, and as you say, keep it separate from the random sample survey, but use it as a complement, so that we've got multiple sort of mechanisms of outreach to gather opinions on these questions.
Fantastic. And obviously, translation will be important.
Yes.
If that is wrong. Fantastic. I appreciate that. And so there's the dataset, then there's, I think as Kelly said, the community conversations piece. And, you know, even last night, there was somebody that was identified that, at least in my opinion, would be great in that, I think. My hope is that the folks from the Collective and the Community Services Commission, even the Youth Commission, and maybe some of the professors, both at Cal State and Chabot, can be leading those community conversations as they did, as was done with the task force. Am I thinking right that that is part of the plan?
Absolutely. Yes. And I think Mary Thomas is on here as well. Maybe she can talk a little bit about some of that outreach work. We've already started working with the Chabot students this summer to start vetting some of the discussion questions for those community conversations. So Mary, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we initially brainstormed some questions with both Chabot students, as well as with some different staff, the Gare group of staff, and with PD, just to have something to start with, because the summer classes end right now. And the students have interviewed 200 community members in Hayward using these questions, and have used it for their writing assignments for the summer, just to give us some initial baseline responses that we can share with FM3, and also for us to learn, like, what are the pitfalls of having students interview other students, and what, you know, and what are the upsides? But it's such, it's been so successful that actually we have had five or six additional faculty want to sign on to do this in the fall, so we can probably interview hundreds of community members that way. And then in addition, we'll have the community conversations that we've been talking about. And so far, I have a list of at least 12 organizations that want to partner with that, but I'm super open to any referrals, and we'll send out the draft working list. The calendar for all of this should be up on the website by mid-August, with the focus of doing it throughout the month of September.
Yeah, happy to brainstorm around, especially fake communities and some of the work on that.
Great. That would be super helpful.
Yeah, to the extent that council members have any suggestions about who we should be outreach to, please send them. I'll make sure to share them with Mary, and we can gather that information, and, you know, brainstorming those lists would be very helpful for us.
Absolutely. And it's, and we could also piggyback on the work of the Census, because this is similar kind of, you know, who are those hard-to-count populations, but probably the same populations that we would want to make sure.
Yeah, it's a great, a great idea.
Little travel hearing, Councilmember Lambnun, but yeah, I hope you did.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, what I heard was using the same, there's a large, I think 28 organizations that have very, they're a part of the census outreach. And so using some of those same ones, for sure. And I think help, help, any help reaching out and finding the right person at those organizations, I was super, super grateful for that. The goal right now is to train using the GARE cohort, because we have at least quite a few number of staff in those. And anyone else who's interested to do a training with staff members to make sure that we have a wide range of staff who can help facilitate or be part of conversations so that we're spreading the wealth. Because we're hoping to do, you know, 40 or so. And so making sure we can schedule it all in.
Absolutely. So yeah, and feel free to reach out if there's questions of, you know, who's the right contact for this, or we can't find somebody in this population, you know, I could, I'll volunteer us all to be a resource.
Great. Thank you so much. I will, I'll take you up on that.
Good. And so I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues in being able to do this little bit deeper dive into what we're talking about. That is really helpful. Specifically, the question you asked about questions, what I was thinking about was a few questions. So one is, what does a successful crisis response look like? And full disclosure, not a, not a researcher, not a pollster, not anything of value, other than a council member with questions in my head. So I'm going to say these, I trust that they get put into our.
We will, we will, they will wordsmith them. They will take the, the concept and the idea and put it into survey format. So and then it'll come back to you so you can reflect on it.
That's right. We want raw material here. Just things you think we should explore, questions you have in your mind. As Kelly says, we'll put it into survey shape later, but just wanting to make sure we hear your ideas.
Perfect. That's exactly where it was coming from. So here's my raw ideas. What does successful crisis response look like? And what does it not look like? How much risk is acceptable for staff who are responding to, let's say, traffic issues or domestic issues? You know, there is the proposal, just to quickly clarify this, you know, the idea that perhaps it's not an armed officer who does traffic enforcement or responds in a domestic violence or homelessness situation. Okay. The underlying, the question that always comes next is what happens if that person gets hurt? And so I really like to understand from the community, what is their expectation about that? You know, people in emergency rooms typically aren't armed, but deal with some of the same issues. And so how do we, how do we understand this issue of what is the right response? And what is an acceptable level of risk to the person who's responding? I think it would be helpful to know if people feel safe in this community. I think that's one of the questions we've asked in the past. And so another check in on that. I think we've also asked in the satisfaction survey about have they called 911 and how has been the response? I don't know that we need to duplicate that data, but in terms of the final response, the final dataset that comes to council, any data we already have that's applicable. I know we only have so many questions on the questionnaire, so I don't want us to duplicate anything we asked in 2019. But that's a dataset that we can pull. The other dataset I think we can pull, and I know, Kelly, you had staff do this as the calls for service data. And so to the extent that can be shared earlier with council members, as we're having conversations over the summer, and then obviously in this report as well.
Yeah. I think the data on the calls for service did go to all council members. So everyone, yeah, I think I copied all council when I responded to you with that dataset. So.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That was probably about a month and a half, two months ago now. Was it, was it that long ago? I can't remember.
I would say about a month.
Maybe about a month ago. Yeah. I can, I can resend it to council.
Yeah, that would be helpful. We've gotten a lot of email in the past month and a half.
That's fair. And then two other, two last ones. So some police departments don't carry lethal force weapons or have a continuum of force. And what do people think would be the benefits or the drawbacks of such an approach? What are their concerns about that or benefits? And the last one, similar to an earlier question of, and if there was a middle response, you know, on one end of the continuum of 211, which is an information, you know, what happens? I mean, you get information, 911, you get police or fire. And what if there was this middle response that was something else? Maybe it's a mental health professional, maybe it's a case manager, whatever. Maybe it's a nurse, you know. What, if there was this middle response, and then who is it that decides that? Is it the dispatcher who decides that? Or is it the person on the call? Please send me a verse. So how does that get triaged? This is the question. What's the community expectation? Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. So I'm, I'm just going to start off by saying I hate surveys. You know, I hate taking them. I'm not sure I trust the data that you get out of them. One of my questions when I hear that, you know, 37 or, you know, 67% of the people think this, well, what did they know about that before they were asked about it is a question that I always have. So, so I, and then when I'm, when I'm taking a survey, it's like, well, I can't answer that in either yes or no, or on a scale of one to 10, because I want to know what, you know, well, what's the specific situation? And, you know, what about this? And so, so I'll just put that out there that that's my attitude towards surveys in general, and, and has been for a long time, since I was in graduate school in journalism. And that was longer ago than I want to say. So, but I understand that we use surveys in our modern life. And I, and I certainly, what we want though, is we want to hear what people think in this community and what ideas they have, what their, you know, what their current view is of the way we provide police services, what they would like to see done differently, what they would like to see more of or less of. And, you know, I think we're, we're trying, that's what we're trying to get at. So one of my, my first question is, is any of this going to be open ended? Or, you know, where people will be able to, is, are you doing a survey that way, rather than just pick one of these? Or tell me on a scale of one to 10?
Yeah. There's, I think we certainly envision there will absolutely have to be at least a few open ended questions in the survey. Those kinds of questions are very time consuming. So we can ask only a few of them if we're going to keep within the length of time we can really hold people's attention in the survey. And I think, and the city manager can speak to this, the, the notion was that the companion research projects, which would be much more sort of longer in-depth and open-ended conversations would help to provide that context.
Absolutely. And that might give us, the open ended and the, the quantitative survey would give us, like, maybe better discussion frames for those deeper conversations. So say, you really need to explore this issue because it kept coming up in the open ended question, but we didn't really get to dive deeper into it. So you need to have additional conversations around XYZ issue.
Okay. And then, you know, and then are we going to be asking questions to at least put this person in a, you know, what, what do they bring to the table? Or are we going to ask demographic questions? Or, you know, geographical questions about where they live? Or, you know, do they work in Hayward? Those kinds of things to set, you know? Yeah. So, okay. And then, so I think, oh, and then how, do you have any thoughts on getting input for, I mean, our police deal frequently with people who are homeless? They don't have phones? Well, they, they do. A lot of times they do have phones, actually. So I mean, do you, do we think that we are going to be able to reach out to that population? Unsheltered, I'm sorry, Councilmember, what, Lambnun?
People who are.
What?
People who are homeless is the, is my ask.
Yeah. How are we going to reach out to people who are homeless? Or has that been considered that we're going to try? And also, and I think this is really important because, you know, we know that mental health is a, is a big part of this whole issue and how we deal with that. So how are we going to get at whether people have had any experience with, you know, police in connection with mental health issues and what their, you know, I think, you know, what you were, I think it was I, was it Ayesha that, I'm sorry, I was thinking about something that, oh, well, no, that was different. But anyway, so, you know, that, that issue, how do we get that out? Like what, you know, so there need to be well-designed questions around that. One thing Ayesha brought up was, are we going to be surveying police, the police themselves in any way? Or, you know, how, how does their input enter into this?
So I think there's a couple of ways, and I'll just talk, I think it's more in the community conversation piece, along with SEIU and some of the other professional staff in the, in the police department. But I do think there, that before, I have committed to both the command staff and the POA leadership, an opportunity to review the survey questionnaire before it goes out so that they can have some input into it as well. I think that would be important, maybe with some of the shop stewards for SEIU, because they've asked to be, I know they have a couple of shop stewards over there. So we can absolutely include those, those folks in the conversation. And I think then diving deeper in the community conversation, I, I see us having several internal conversations within the police department to that end, like what could be done differently? What policies or procedures are you concerned with? And, and those need to be obviously done delicately. And there may be some online survey that we could do of employees in that sense, so that it could be more confidential and people could weigh in that way. So those are all things that we're exploring and trying to figure out the best approach.
Okay. And how do you, and, and then just really being careful about establishing the trust that would be needed for people to really open up in a, you know, in a situation like this. And specifically.
Can I, to that end, can I just make a point? Because I know Dr. Emily Young from Youth and Family Services Bureau has been on our working team. And she and Mary are working closely together to put together a resource list of therapists, counselors, if these conversations bring up trauma for individuals who are participating, that we have resources to be able to direct folks to. Also, some of the YFSB counselors have asked to be facilitating some of the community conversations. So they will be part of the staff team. They're very excited about participating in the process as well and look forward to being a part of it. So I think, I just wanted, I know that that had come up about making sure that there's resources available for individuals who might have relapses of trauma experiences. I don't know that that's the right clinical term, but that, that experience when they go through a community conversation.
Okay. And then, I, on specific questions, I think, you know, just, you know, obviously getting a sense of what kinds of interaction the survey, the person being surveyed has had with our police department. And, and then it was specific things like, and one of the interests sort of, well, something that has intrigued me from the seven demands is the participatory budget idea. But, you know, if you say, well, what do you think of participatory budgeting? I think most people would say, what is it? So things like that, like how do you, I, I think that, you know, if we're looking at the seven demands, you know, that's one of them. And, you know, you're going to have to, but, but you're going to have to figure out how, how do you, how do you convey the meaning of that to see what the response is?
Mayor, can I just, I know we talked about this, but can I just share with the group what the staff thought was on the participatory budget piece? We thought that it might be useful, because I think there's, there's very, there's a ton of variations in how you can do participatory budgeting, that maybe we dedicate a portion of the September Budget and Finance Committee meeting to just, staff can pull some, I know Mary Thomas, Jill of all trades, was also chair of Oakland's Participatory Budget Committee for a number of years. And so has some unique experience that she can bring to the conversation and share different models that different cities could use. And I think that would be a good discussion, because I think there is value in having, you know, some sort of participatory process. We have the Community Services Commission process is sort of a toe, a small toe dip into participatory budgeting. But I think just getting some more background on the different models that are out there. And so we thought we could bring that in September for the committee to, to talk about that and to, to hear more about that.
Right, right. And I guess, just, you know, I know that doing a headquarters building or not is a question, is, you know, I've, we've been, I've got an email the other day saying, how could you not build a new police headquarters building? Well, when we don't have $100 million or whatever it's going to cost. But, but, you know, so, you know, thoughts about that particular issue? Because that's a big issue for us as a city. And, and around that, well, what about the opposite of building one new big police headquarters is what, would people want to see the police department spread more around to town or diversified in some way? And then, you know, do they, have they ever viewed body camera footage of an incident? And do they want to do that? Or, you know, something along those lines of what their, you know, what their reaction or what their experience has been? And even looking at the body camera footage that is, has been made available on our website in some of, in some of the incidents that we've had. So I think that, oh, and then surveillance equipment was also mentioned in the, one of the seven demands. And that, I mean, I, you know, my, my response to that is, well, exactly what are you talking about? So and, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that, but, you know, I'd like to know what the range of what they're talking about. And does it include body cameras? You know, do they not want us to have, because body cameras are surveillance in a way. And, and also our program that we have where people can register who have cameras. Do they want us not to have cameras in the city of, I mean, I don't know that you can do that. You can tell a homeowner you can't have one. But then we often ask to see it in terms, in cases of an incident. And we have a special program where people can register their, you know, to, to let us know they have a camera. So if something happens in that vicinity, we can check with them. So that kind, I mean, you know, just what the, what the depth, I'm not quite understanding from the seven demands what the breadth of that request is. But surveillance really covers a whole of, a lot of territory. So, all right. Well, those are my comments.
Could I add as well?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, considering we've had a couple of different conversations about this, I just want to be very clear. When we talk about police involvement in, in any of this, one, it, it should be very much separated from the regular community, if you will, the non-uniformed community. Because I know even in sanctuary status, we, we had conversations where, you know, police were there fully uniformed gear, and obviously that triggered people and stuff like that. And then comments were made talking about bringing ICE agents and having a conversation and so forth. And even though it was well-intentioned in the sense of, you know, just thinking, you know, two opposites can come and communicate with each other, obviously that's not how it was perceived. So I, I want to be very clear on that in, in all of our meetings. And I understand that sometimes we do have officers, but I, I don't think it's appropriate necessarily for this particular type of conversation. As far as training, I specifically am very interested in the training. I personally don't think post is adequate enough. Oftentimes, they ask you to do a certain type of training once every five years. And sometimes it's only like an hour, two hours, five hours, max eight hours to like, once in five years, right? I'll be honest with you, I don't remember anything from five years ago. So it's, it's, it's difficult to say that, you know, training is sufficient just on the post mandated requirements. So I would like to analyze what, what is actually happening within our department. And one of the goals with our new chief was very much to take a look inside, see, see what's going on, things like that. And I really genuinely don't want a spiel. I, I know that the community has talked about the HUSD presentation and, you know, some will say the tokenizing of certain members of color in the police department to, you know, speak very positively about their police experience. And I'm sure that that's the case for that individual. However, this is kind of not a dog and pony show at this point, right? We want to get to the meat of it and we, we just want to start from scratch, what's going on. So I, I do want us to kind of focus on that. But with, with our, our chief, and I know that he worked on mental health. I know when I met with him last year around this time, in fact, like I think September, right, right before he started, we did talk about just data. When Chief Kohler was here, we had a presentation in March or May, where he went over some of the stats and kind of like the annual review of the police department. This year, we did not have that. And granted, COVID hit, so it kind of probably hit the timeframe. But at the same time, I, I know with our chief- our chief coming from San Francisco, bigger city, a little bit more mature in some of their processes and technologies and, you know, analysis is, I was expecting a little bit more of that this year, and I'm still hoping to see it, because I do want to know, I remember asking Chief Kohler, in particular, the question, what is your response time from when you get a call to when you arrive on scene? And he clearly stated he did not have that answer, which was a shock, because if you ask the fire department, when you get a call to when you arrive on scene, how long does it take? I want to say, and they will get upset if I say something wrong, but I think six minutes, or give or take. So I would like some of those stats. And I know our chief definitely, one of the first things he said to me was that he will be working on that. So, but I also want to talk about the equity of service from the police throughout the city. So I believe in our interviews last night, Mr. Zachariah Kinda, who serves on the community advisory panel for the chief, stated that when he rides his bike around A Street, it's not the nicest part. And I'll be honest, I live there, so I know it's not the nicest part, and we don't get the attention that we deserve. So I just want to see in all of our services, whether it's maintenance, whether it's police, whether it's fire, so forth, that we are focused on the entire city, not in pockets of the city and so forth, the way that many people have accused, you know, the city and so forth. So I do-
Can I just respond on, I wanted to, I know we did send a matrix of the training requirements for the, for our police department compared to the post standards. So I'm happy to send that again to the council, because I know we did, sorry, did provide that information to the council, I think it was probably last year. So I think sending, sending that again in the context of this discussion might be helpful information for everyone to have. So I'm happy to do that again.
And it might be beneficial for, for the public as well, because I know that half the conversation is there. So I know we have, you know, I ask for stuff, and, you know, everybody else asks for stuff. One of the reasons why I want to talk about training and why training is so important, is that The Insider just released an article, if anybody's gonna take a note on this, called "One of America's Most Popular Police Trainers Is Teaching Officers How to Kill." And granted, obviously sensationalized title, but the training actually went in depth, and the article went in depth, and 30 Hayward PD officers took this training in 2012 and 2013. Now, this predates many of us, but that is of concern. And there are sites that, you know, with all the hacking and so forth, there is a list of 30 officers that I have that took this training. So that is of concern. I'm happy to share that as well. So that, I do want to say that I definitely want to, let's say, if we do have anything that is a question within our, our department, and whether it's training or as we do a full analysis, is that we correct these things, right? So nobody's perfect. I know one of our officers asked me point blank in the last two months, do you think there's anything wrong with our department? Honest question. And, you know, I appreciate the question, but I also responded stating that if you think that anything's perfect, that's, that's the problem right there, right? Because we have to continually improve, right? So, so even with our training and look inwards, I definitely know and hope that our chief can, can kind of focus on that. As far as surveillance, I know I've asked in every meeting, we've talked about police, the email that, that both Councilmember Mendel and I sent regarding surveillance, and granted, that only covered a small percentage of it, I definitely want to have that at the forefront of the, the conversation as well, because it does address the demands. It was sent in February.
We actually just had a meeting about it today. So it is the, the policy document regarding policy guidance around use of surveillance technology in the city. So-
Yeah. And to Mayor, to your point, I think it's more in, for me, one, it's sharing the data, and two, it's, it's how much surveillance, do we really want to be big brother, if you will?
Well, I agree with you that, you know, that's an important area. We're talking about the survey today, though. We're not talking, and I think that, you know, before we make sweeping, I mean, I know we all have our opinions about, you know, changes that may need to occur, or that we think should occur in the department. But our focus today is on getting the community's input into that before-
Hundred percent.
And that will help us form our responses, too.
Yes.
You know, it is easy to get off, off, off the topic of today and on to the, the general, the bigger topic, which, you know, and I certainly agree with you completely about data, and that we need to be getting, that's a big element of what we're gonna want to look at going forward. What kinds of data and are we getting? How often, in what manner is data being put out by our-
And I will say that this does pertain to the survey, because with the demands and everything else that has been included in this agenda item and the letters, primarily when we talk about surveillance and their, their requests for surveillance, you know, this does partake into that. And I do want to know what the public considers, because sometimes over, information overload is not a positive either. And then as far as our critical incident updates, and I know that we have the website that we're trying to, to kind of stand up, so people are well aware of the process, I know that we are going to update that. I don't know when that will be. So, so I guess the timeline of that, I know that you guys had it in your last staff report as to kind of the focus of what you guys will include in that.
There's two different, so there's two different, there's the critical incident page, and then we're creating a web portal, which will be different, which will have sort of a compendium of a variety of different things around this topic, including the ability for folks to sign up for an email distribution list and, and get, you know, the per the comments we heard from the council. So that will be a separate page and should be up live shortly in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. And, and I definitely just wanted to highlight the critical incident page, because it has not been updated. So I just took a look at that, like I want to say, yesterday. So I know we were gonna update it with a couple items.
Yes. Yeah, that should be, should be updated by early next week, hopefully.
Perfect. And then as far as the, the, some of the questions, I do want to say that I, I trust that we will not have leading questions as well. I know that, you know, obviously researchers are going to be very much focused on that. Even if we had some open-ended text, right, where it's not just a black and white, you know, check a multiple choice, A, B, or C, but some open text would be interesting to see what, and it could be a paragraph, no character limit. Because some, sometimes people will say, you know, the service was good, but my real problem was X, Y, and Z, because I did not feel heard on X, Y, or Z, something like that, right? So I would like some consideration in that. And overall, you know, I know that this is a heavy, heavy bearing. So I do appreciate everybody's patience, including the communities. And Mayor, I'm sure you weren't too happy with, you know, some folks in front of your home. So that was a little out of the norm yesterday when they visited you, or yesterday or Monday, or whenever they visited you. Some folks came by your home, we saw the videos on social media. So, yeah, I just want people to be a little patient. And I know staff is working on this, and, you know, how we do this during COVID, and the survey, and things like that. But will, when we get the questions, can we share it with the public as well?
So, I mean, I think we can, we can probably figure out some way to do that. I mean, one of the things we don't want to do is, I think in some surveys, we're careful to not taint the results by sending out the, the questions. I don't know, Dave, what your-
Maybe, maybe, maybe my question is more in the sense of, you know, the handful of people that if we were to select, you know, that can, that is from the community, that-
I mean, I think the intent was to share the questionnaire with some of the leaders of the community coalition to get their thoughts on it before we send it out, like we, we did before we came to council with the community engagement plan. So, you know, I think if that's, if that's your interest in, you know, making sure we reach out to some of those key stakeholders, we're happy to do that.
And if you were to do that again with the questions, can we get a meeting record as to, per question, some of the concerns around this was X, Y, or Z? So, for example, if there was a question about mental health, and the question was, you know, I don't know anything about it. But if, if somebody said, I am concerned about this question, because, you know, they're stating mental health as a problem, or whatever the case is, right? If we can get some kind of, you know, the feedback response per question?
We can, we can take notes during the meeting and provide that to the council, if you would like us to do that.
Okay.
I had one that prompted me to think, the idea about including a, you know, like your comments, type your comments here, right, or, you know, at the end, or, but, you know, you run the, you run the risk of either being too short, and people are like stopping in the middle of a word, and, oh, it won't let me type anymore. Or, you just don't, you just don't want to necessarily open, we get some really weird letters sometimes. You don't want to just, so I don't know how you do that. But one of the things I thought of as I was thinking, I think that that is a good idea to include something like that. But maybe also a, would you like to have someone follow up with you regarding whatever it is that's on your mind, and talk more in depth about this particular issue that you're, you're wanting to tell us about?
Yeah, I think that's good, too.
Yeah. I mean, I think both, both can be done. But, but, you know, there's gonna be a finite, it's gonna be finite what they can type. And some people, that will be fine, others it won't be. But, you know, but if you add also, would you like somebody to call you and follow up about, if they really want to go on about some, you know, I realize that subjects some of us to some interesting conversations, but we all do have them. And, you know, I mean, and I think that's a part of what we need to understand if we're understanding. So I guess I want to go back to also the police, how we're going to actually survey the police, and whether, just to make sure that people, we have had some challenging, you know, situations in our police department over the last 15 years, 16 years that I've been on council, probably before that, too. But there, you know, there've been a couple major traumas that the police department has gone through. That's, it's been several years, but since. But, you know, just, just to really get an idea of what people in the department really, you know, feel about what's happening there. And, you know, especially including how long have you been with the department? And, you know, kind of, you know. All right. With that, unless there's anything else, can we move on?
I do have one, more of a question, I guess, for, for our city manager. Our community advisory panel, I know that several members of the council, you know, kind of chimed in, whether or not, one, it's gonna be public, and two, the Brown Act/Robert rules, what did you take on it? And are we gonna make any changes?
I think we'll come back and talk to the council about that when we bring the issue back this fall. I, you know, I think there was, there was some intention behind not having it be a Brown Act committee. It gives it more flexibility to do some things. But, you know, I think that's obviously something that we can talk further about with the council.
Can I sneak in, and when you get a second, can I sneak in on that point?
Yes, sure. Chief, I think I hear that voice. Chief?
You do. And just real fast, Councilmember Wahab talks about the vast experience in San Francisco, and there was, there was a lot of experience in San Francisco. We had many community advisory panels, African-American community advisory panel, Latino advisory, gay and lesbian, we had a bunch. And one of the things we did was, so people could speak freely, was it wasn't open to the public, because there were sensitive items specific to those particular communities discussed. You know, and it was, it was done that way for a reason, is because folks came in there, and they bared their soul, and talked about some things that quite frankly, they didn't want out in the public sphere. And we also, as a police department, gave them kind of some of the inside playbook that not, was not necessarily meant for public dissemination. And so it made the information flow a lot better. It made it cleaner, it made it easier. And so that's why we did that. And, you know, I had my hand up earlier, and I just wanted to address some of the things you're talking about. Post has the requirements, and the Hayward Police Department is generally exceeding all those time restraints you're talking about by years, if you're talking about five years. That's the other thing I wanted to talk about. And the other thing is, talking about San Francisco, the chief was just on a long interview on KTV, talking about coming up with this innovative idea that if you pull your gun out, not use it or point it at anybody, but just pulling it out, you have to write an explanation. And it's, it's a sure force, and it's documented. Hayward has been doing that since 2017. The danger associated with the path we're currently on is, quite frankly, the city council members are ignorant of what the, what their department is doing. I brought this up at another meeting. Most have not been at our facility in well over a year, physically. It's four minutes from City Hall. And I think this is the time and the place where we do need to educate folks. And you're talking about the time to respond to scenes, and what Garrick Contreras gave you and everything, that's cool. But his dispatch is our dispatch. Our dispatch is all working at the same facility for police and fire. So I can get you those numbers if you need them. There's a lot of information that's available at the Hayward Police Department. The problem is, until George Floyd, there was a lot of folks that were not interested, just kind of like, community members not interested in the budget until George Floyd, and suddenly, there's discussion about the police department. The other concern, I just want to put on everybody's radar, we're reading and discussing a lot of the Hayward Collective and other folks' demands. There's some demands from people that do not want to defund the police department, that I'm sure the city councils received by now. I've been forward at most of those demands as well. I've not heard those discussed one time. And that's of concern for me as the police chief in, in this city. So there's also another issue. The biggest disparity is the disparity of murder. We've had 10 homicides in the last eight months, four African-American males, five Latinx people, one female, and one white male. And so I think the greatest disparity is having your life taken from you. There is no probation or parole from that. So I'd be happy to have this conversation with the city council. But I also want to make sure that we understand, the reason we want somebody outside for this survey, is right now, things are white hot, and we need somebody that's kind of dispassionate about it to come in and just talk about the raw numbers. The questions we all come up with, we can talk to as many different stakeholders as possible, come up with the questions. But the raw scientific data, we should have it held. And the other piece is, you talked about the Hayward Police Office that attended that training. The controversial piece about that training, Councilmember Wahab, is the fact the guy that put, that was one of the participants in that particular training, is a, is an expert witness for police departments. And they talk about his testimony. I get what you're saying, but that's post-certified training, by PhDs, as you've mentioned earlier, is folks that we need to talk about and consider as academics. Those are folks that did that training, and the fact that he's testified for police departments is what made him controversial. We look at our training and constantly reevaluate it. The rest of the nation is trying to catch up with the Hayward Police Department, because they are clearly certified, which less than 1% of the 18,000 law enforcement in this nation are. So when we look at some of the innovative, cutting-edge things that New York, Chicago, Philly, and other people are doing right now, they're playing catch-up, quite frankly, with the Hayward Police Department. And my old department, San Francisco, as evidenced by that, that press conference on, on Saturday or Sunday, I forget which day it was, they're talking about doing something we've been doing since 2017 in the city. So there's a lot of shining things that this department has been doing. And you're absolutely right, Commissioner, Councilmember Wahab, there, there is no perfect department on the planet. It's, there are people that work here. And by our very nature, we're all flawed. So I'm just throwing these things out there as a consideration that before we start making public comments, that we, that I invite you, all of you, to come in and look down with our folks.
Okay. Yeah. But I do think we're, what we're asking for is data, which we haven't really gotten for a long time. And I know that, you know, I mean, it's been a tough year, and we've got a lot of other things on our plate right now. But I do think that's something we want to see more of coming out on a more regular basis than it has been in the last few years. But-
I'd like to ask something. Primarily in our last meeting, Chief, you spoke as well. Today, you know, I'm hearing something kind of down the similar path of what was said on July 21 meeting. I will have to respectfully push back on a couple of things. Number one, this council is a policymaking body. We are responsible for the different departments. And if we ask for additional data, that is within our accountability and responsibility purview.
Absolutely.
People have, have elected us to make sure that we are servicing them and servicing them well. I understand that we have had, again, hundreds upon hundreds of emails regarding defunding the police. And I will state that, you know, I've heard the comments that they're not from here or so forth. Many of them have put their address and their phone number. And if you respond to them, they will state that where they live. I will say that, you know, democracy is a participation game. And so we have also received roughly about a dozen or so anti- anti-defund the police. Now, I, I'm not necessarily interested, maybe, maybe to you, Mayor. I haven't received all of them. But I, I will say that, you know, my concern is more, let us take a raw look at this particular department that has historically, in, in many cities, in many jurisdictions and so forth, public safety was never really looked at with, you know, controls or reining in anything significantly. And I understand the training and so forth that you've even mentioned as, as being above and beyond, if you will. And it started roughly in 2017. Now, that's roughly three years ago. So I do believe that we have a lot of work to do. I don't want to debate the merits of who is speaking, who is not speaking, the quality of our police department and, and police officers. I know that everyone is hardworking. But at the same time, I think our focus should be, how can we improve? Where are the areas that we can understand, you know, what we are doing and what is the direction we want to go into? So I, I will leave it at that.
And, yeah, and I, I do, I will say, I think that, that is, you know, that, that is what we are aiming to have, is that kind of discussion. That is not what we're supposed to be having right here at this meeting. And I really, I'm sorry, but I just really want to get us back focused on the, and I do think we've given a lot, I hope that we've given a lot of good input for this. I'm, I'll ask Mr., I have forgotten your name already, and I'm not seeing it on my screen, but, survey person.
Mayor Halliday, can I, can I, can I say one last thing so I can close out the, my present, my, my, my commentary on this? And this is Chief Chaplin again, and, and I'll shut up.
Very, very quickly.
Very quickly. No, I, I get what you're saying, Councilmember Wahab, but those are form letters you're talking about, and that's what's bringing the ire of the department. Some of the folks that sent those letters to you, because I was CC'd on all of them, every single one of them, they forgot to remove "Insert your name here" and things of that nature. So to be fair, to be fair to, to the police department, it's not fair to get blitz, to get blitzkrieged by a form letter that reads exactly the same from everyone. The letters that we got from the public pro-police are all different. They're not form letters.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut this off now. We are not going to have this debate, please, right now.
So I, I just want to state that, that, that is, you know, similar to what we've received when we talk about rental issues. These template emails are kind of the, the status quo now. So I get what you're saying, and I do agree that, you know, I would like a little bit more individual, individualization of these emails, but that is what it is. But the goal here is still the same. So let's, let's focus on these questions.
It is, and this is a step toward the goal, getting the survey. This is only a piece. I think maybe even the more important piece is the community conversations that we're going to try to have. And, you know, we'll move on from there. But, so, so again, I want to ask our surveyor, do you, is there, do you have any questions of us after hearing all that? Or do you feel that you got good input from us?
I got good input. This is a very helpful starting point, and, and we will take this all into account as we begin work on designing the survey.
All right. And so I'm going to ask that we move on, because, you know, I, I don't want to get into that full debate. We are going to have that conversation. And, you know, and we, that's, but that's a conversation we need to be having now with the people who live here in a lot of different ways. So I think that will be happening. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to, are there any future agenda items?
I think we have the September participatory budgeting discussion. Dustin, I think you're still on. Are there any other topics for September?
At this point, that's all. That doesn't mean that, that won't change between now and then, like, like it certainly could, especially if we get more information on any stimulus funding that may come. Unfortunately, I did read that there was nothing included in the Senate's plan for cities. But certainly, we hope that that will change between now and, now that the time that that's passed, so.
Well, perhaps just an item on any, anything you can tell us about how revenues are looking in, in light of COVID and the situation we're in. I think we ought to have that sort of standing right now. Any new developments or, or, you know, surprises that are happening or, you know, in terms of revenue? Good or bad, hopefully good.
I will try to keep them all good, but can't...
We need to hear the other two. Sarah, did you have?
Yeah, just, yeah, to the point, sort of the standing budget item on budget updates, something to that effect, so we get a sense of, you know, where's the revenue, you know, too close to projections, where expenses in comparison to projections, et cetera. And I think that, yeah, gives us room to talk about COVID or changes or whatever. But it seems like that should be the standing item, or a standing item on any agendas for ever. Anyway, for this year.
Okay, Ayesha?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.